Call the meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three, approval of the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. Public forum. Presentation.
Actually, I'm going to take a little exception to the rule if I may, Mr. Chair, for a public forum. I would like to take a moment to recognize, because I think this is the last official full meeting for Lance Oy as a school board member, and for those of you that weren't here earlier, he said he walked into his first board meeting and he was going to walk into his last, so that's a huge accomplishment for everything that Lance has been through. But Lance, we do have a small certificate of appreciation, a plaque to follow for, it looks like, 12 years of service and commitment to the Pipestone Area Schools in this capacity. So again, this little token here says, "In grateful recognition of your 12 years of dedicated service as a school board member at Pipestone Area Schools, your unwavering commitment and leadership have significantly contributed to the success and growth of our schools and community. Respectfully signed by the Board Chair and Superintendent of Schools." So congratulations, man. Thank you for your service. And for everybody to celebrate with us, we do have cake afterwards, so you've got to stick around for that, too.
Thank you so much.
And I don't know if I should give this to you as much as your wife.
Probably my wife. She's been a great help. Thank you, everybody. It's been a wonderful 12 years. I was chairman for two years, and that was interesting that I did it, and I've had a lot of ups and downs in here, but the biggest accomplishment was getting the elementary school built and more stuff for our kiddos to do, and that's the biggest thing is we're here for our kids, and that's it. Kids only. Education is the most important thing in my books. I think we've done a great job here and come a long ways. Thank you for everybody for supporting us, and that's it.
Thanks, Lance.
Number five, presentation. 5.1, Matt Talbert Audit Report.
Everybody should have a copy. I dropped it off right now. I love you, everybody. I'm going to start my presentation on pages three, four, five, and six, and this is our opinion regarding the financial statements and what this four-page report states. In our opinion, the financial statements that come after this present fairly the financial position and the results of operations of the district as of and for the year ended June 30th, 2024. It's an unqualified clean opinion, which is what you want to have in your audit report. If it were something other than that, I should have been talking to you well before this evening. So that's the first start. That's good. That's where you want to be with that. And then if you, I think a lot of you have been in previous presentations I've done, I'd like to go to the back of the report, starting on page 75, because the information in the back of the report is considerably more detailed than the condensed information. It's the same information, but again, it's considerably more detailed. I'm going to hit totals, starting on page 75. The format of this schedule is, this is a statement of revenues and expenditures for the general fund only. The format is the first column is budget, second one is actual, third column over is the variance with the budget, and the far right-hand side is the 2023 actual comparative. Total revenues the district budgeted for were $16,318,692. On the back of the bottom of page 75, total actual revenues came in at $16,702,750. So the district did better than budget by $384,058, comparing 22 to 23 to 24. You're up a little over $570,000 in revenue, 23 to 24. Most of that probably coming from revenue in the state sources category. That is up a little over $1 million in that category alone. I'll mention it a little bit later, but two of the revenue items that are probably subject to the most potential fluctuation is general education aid and special education aid. Those numbers seem to move all the way up until probably April or May of the following year. In the last report that I checked, general ed computation on the Minnesota Department of Education's website, general education aid on $1,255,000, we're about $2,500 different than the last computation the state did. So that's great. We want to be close to that number. And special ed is actually up compared to the revenue that Jackie had computed, and so for both of those items, we're very close in those items, so that's the two of the items that have the most potential fluctuation, if you will, but I feel that we're real close on both of those. So with that said, I'm going to move to page 76. This is where we start the expenditures. Expenditures are categorized by broad category. District and school administration. The very first category is budgeted revenue, budgeted expenditure, excuse me, of $997,101. Actual was $992,127, so you were a little bit under budget by just about $5,000. District support services, middle of the page, budgeted is $464,992, actual was $442,859, so you were under budget in that category by $22,133. Then towards the bottom, two-thirds of the way down the page, regular instruction. District-wide, budgeted for $652,799, actual came in at $664,147, so you were over budget by $11,348, and that's, even at that dollar amount, you're still within just less than 2%, less than, yeah, just 1.17% of what your total budget was, so we're still very close. Elementary school at the bottom of page 76, budgeted at $3,787, actual was $3,162,502. We're over by $155,415, still within approximately 5% of what the original budgeted amount was. And then top of the next page is the middle school. Budgeted expenditures were $1,7771, actual was $1,45,892, so we're over budget by $38,191. Again, that difference is still less than 4% of the original budgeted amount. And then the secondary school, the last category in regular instruction, was budgeted at $2,874,375, actual came in at $2,881,320, so you were over budget by $669,45, that's less than 0.2 of 1% of variance on that one. And then the total regular instruction, we take all of the categories together, budgeted at $7,541,962, actual came in at $7,753,861, so you were over budget by, excuse me, over budget by $211,899. Again, that variance is less than 3% from the total budget, so very close budget adherence on the, what I call the overall regular instruction category. Last one on page 77 is vocational instruction. $443,853 was budgeted, excuse me, $450,200 was the actual, so you were over budget by $6,347. Again, that was less than 1.5% of the original budgeted number. And then the top of page 78, exceptional instruction. Budgeted at $2,334,595, actual came in at $2,262,631. You were under budget for the exceptional instruction by $71,964. Again, just right around 3% variance with the budget. Middle of the page, instructional support, $1,056,308 was budgeted, actual was $893,249, under budget by $163,059. And then pupil support services. Bottom of page 78 was budgeted $1,635,993, actual came in at $1,578,467. You were under budget by $57,526, and that's right around a 3%, 3.5% variance from the original budget. And then the top of page 79, site buildings and equipment, which is basically maintenance and utilities, that type of thing, the actual physical structure. $2,200,631 budgeted, $1,996,938 was the actual, under budget by $203,693. And then fixed cost programs, which is basically all of the property insurance, budgeted was $147,285, actual was $148,610, so you were $1,325 over budget in that category. Taken into consideration all of the previous categories from the second or first page we started, was $1, excuse me, $16,822,720 was budgeted, actual was $16,518,942. So overall, all district general fund expenditures, you were under budget by $303,778, which is just a little under 2% variance with the original budget. When we subtract the expenses from the very first page, we have the district going forward by $183,808. There was a small insurance recovery of $4,100, so overall, the general fund went forward by $187,908. Ends of the year with a positive fund balance of $7,565,930. If I can have you just maybe stick your finger in this page and go back to page 42, I just want to give you the breakdown of the reservations of that fund balance. Of that $7,565,930, about middle, top of the, middle of the page, under fund balances, note 10, there's $130,140 set aside for prepaid items, items to be expended in your 24, 25 year. Then just below that, it says restricted fund balance and highlighted general fund, starting with student activities all the way down to medical assistance. Those are categories of fund balance, they're reserved strictly for those spending purposes. The funds need to be spent according to the requirements of those spending accounts. So we've got total general fund restricted fund balance of $1,451,030. Then the top of about the middle of the next page, 43, center of the page, it says general fund, there is severance set aside of $48,909. And then just below that, assigned fund balance. These are funds that are assigned for a specific purpose. It's not as formal a declaration as a restriction, but it's kind of a set aside, starting with Athletic Help Fund down to Arrow Way. Total set aside, assigned fund balance is $25,298. And then the bottom of page 43, general fund, unassigned fund balance, $5,910,553. That's funds that are available for any, basically, general fund spending purpose. It's not restricted funds. When we add all those together, that total is up to the $7,565,930 on page 79. Just one other note on page 79. The district's policy is to maintain between 25% and 34% of fund balance of a three-year average expenditures. Three years' average expenditures of $16 million and some change. You're basically using that formula. You're about 36%, 37% funded in the minimum of 25% to 34%, you're a couple percent higher. That was 38% last year, 22, 23. It's 36.8% this year. So you're meeting your required fund balance, or you're kind of your own self-imposed required minimum fund balance for a general fund, unassigned fund balance. Any general fund questions I can answer for anybody? If not, then the next category of funds I want to deal with are on page 82, page 82 and 83, but we'll start with 82. This is the food service fund. Middle of the page, total budgeted revenues were $1,8846. Actual revenues came in at $1,187,664, so we had more revenue than budgeted by $178,818. Expenditures were budgeted at $986,139. Actual expenditures came in at $1,025,367, so you were over budget expenditure-wise by $39,228. When we subtract expenses from the revenue above, the food service fund went forward by $162,297. Ends of the year with a positive fund balance of $950,689. We'll talk about this when we get to the management letter at the end. You've actually got too much money in your food service fund, which you probably are aware of, but.
We have for a few years.
Yeah, yeah, and now there, I think in January or February, you're going to get a letter from MDE regarding it and dealing with it, so, yeah. If anything good came out of COVID, it helped my students type food service funds in all of my districts, and that would probably be the only good thing, but that's, yeah. So your food service is a very healthy food service. On page 83, we've got the community service fund. Middle of the page, total revenues budgeted at $304,474, actual was $326,640, so over budget by $22,166. Expenditures, about two-thirds of the way down the page, were budgeted at $334,156, actual was $359,827, so you were over budget in expenditures by $25,671. When we subtract the expenses from the revenue above, we have a deficit in the community service fund of $33,187. You're budgeted for a deficit of just about $30,000, so you're really very close to what the original budget plans were. End of the year, the bottom of page 83, the overall fund balance for community service is $552,213. If I can have you just kind of stay on this page, or we can go back to it. Starting on page, be page 43, of that community service fund balance, $552,213, very top of the page, community ed is $242,088, ECFE is $310,530. Learning readiness is a small deficit of $461, and then overall, community service restricted is $56. Those total up to the $552,213 fund balance that we talked about on page 83. That fund balance is reserved strictly back to the, like, the general fund. That's for those spending categories alone. So for the most part, all of the food, community service fund, fund balance is set aside for those spending categories. Then, one more, a couple more funds here, to page 85. This is the district's capital projects fund. This fund exists, these are generally temporary in nature, they exist just to take care of a capital project. Once a capital project is done, any excess is transferred out, any deficit is transferred in to clean up. This would be the bond project that the district is undertaking. Revenues were $116,650 of interest income. Expenditures through June 30th were $209,073. So when we subtract that from the revenue above, we have a deficit of $92,423. Then below that, we have a category called other financing sources and uses. This is where the bond proceeds came in. We've got bond premium of the excess over the amount that you originally issued, the $198,220, and then the actual principal value of the bonds, $2,685. So we've got total other financing sources of $2,883,220, and giving us an ending fund balance of $2,797,97, and that'll be, that'll be spent as the project moves forward. So again, this is, this will be temporary in nature. When the project is done, this fund will be closed out. Then, on page 87, we have what should be the last fund. This is the debt service fund, and this fund exists strictly to pay principal and interest on outstanding district indebtedness. Again, middle of the page, budgeted revenues were $1,838,869. Actual expenditures were $1,857,649, so we're over budget in the revenues by $18,780. Expenditures are strictly just principal and interest charges, budgeted $1,831,850, actual the same. So when we subtract the expenses from the revenue above, we have a positive $25,799. Ending fund balance is $423,239. As the bonds are paid, the state will monitor the year levy, and ultimately, in a perfect world, when this gets to the end, it should be zero. The district has three outstanding issues, but the 2019 building bonds has an outstanding balance of $22,325,000. That'll be paid off in 2040. The lease has got a balance of $346,000. That'll be paid off in 2028. And then the new bonds, $2,685, that will be paid off in 2034. Okay, then I have just a couple of other things just to touch on in page 89, just to bring your attention. Page 89 is the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. Because you have excess of $750,000 of federal funds expended, you're subject to the requirements of a single audit, so we have to provide this schedule to the federal data clearinghouse. And if you see here, the district received $1,758,538 in federal funds in 2023, 2024, which is, which is amazing. We had about, of that $7,000, $1,758, a little over $720,000, that should be the last of the ESER funds or the full bid funds coming down. Let's hope that neither Jackie or I lived long enough there to see that happen. Then, we have a couple of auditors with compliance reports, internal control, page 91, 92, and 93. This is the independent auditor's report in internal control and compliance. We test the district's internal control, and that's how transactions move through the district, receipts, disbursements, approvals, those types of things. And then we also test your compliance with the publication called Government Auditing Standards, and then also a publication put out by our Minnesota State Auditor's Office called the Minnesota Legal Compliance Guide for School Districts. And we have no instances of non-compliance with either the Government Auditing Standards or the Minnesota Legal Compliance Audit Guide. We have, we have two findings in regard to internal control. We'll discuss those in just a second. They're the same findings that we've had in all of the, virtually all of the audits of the district, and virtually all of the audits that our firm does, with the exception of the City of Pipestone. They've got, they've got some measures in place with enough staff that they can overcome those comments, but we'll touch on those in just a second. And then we have page 94, 95, and 96 is another independent auditor's report. This is a report also on compliance and internal control, but this has to do strictly with your major federal program, which mathematically worked out this year was the remainder of the ESER funds. When we found no instances of non-compliance with the federal requirements in regard to the major federal program that the district had. And then if we can go to page 98 and 99. These are in relation to the two findings that I talked about earlier. We've got on top of page 98, finding 2024-001, internal accounting controls. We just don't have enough people in the staff to segregate duties, and this has been in virtually all of the reports that our firm has done for the district and all of, virtually all the others, other than the City of Pipestone. You just can't split things up long enough to where the point of one person doesn't have more than one involvement in the transaction. And it's just economically infeasible to design a system of internal control that would eliminate that. I mentioned in my either city councils, or school boards, or nonprofit boards, you guys are part of the mitigating circumstances in that, so if there are things that you see, questions that you have, ask your questions, you know, get an answer that you're satisfied with, because you're part of the oversight in that internal control. And then 2024-002, GAAP financial statements. Our responsibility as the auditors is to render that four-page opinion on the beginning of the report, again, with the exception of the City of Pipestone. We also, as the engagement with our clients, we prepare the audit report. We prepare the document with the footnotes and the disclosures and the schedules. This is no reflection on the work that's done here at the, at the district. I say it every year, but it's not something you send somebody to a half-a-day class and they come back and they can do it. It's just, it's, there's, since I started in 1983, there is so much more to preparing these financial statements than what there is now. There's probably 45 more pages than what there was when I first started. It's just unbelievable. So I'm required to bring that to your attention. There's really nothing that you can do regarding that, other than, you know, Jackie going back for and getting some education and literally, and all it's going to do is it's just, it's preparation of this document. We're just hoping that the accounting professional will allow us to continue to prepare the financial statements and do the audit. That's the next thing I think is probably coming down the pike, where you'd have to have a firm come in and do this, and then we would do our thing. And all it is going to do is add another layer of expense. Yep, end of the day. But that's something we'll deal with when that time comes, if it should. Then everyone should have two loose letters in the back of the report, and I'll go through these relatively quickly. First one says management letter, the first one I have in front of me. Food service, net cash resources, what we talked about earlier, you got, you got excess funds in your food service. The last one, two, the last three pages of this letter, I just took the notice from the Department of Education and just filled in your numbers into their computational thing, and you're over by a little over $176,000, so hopefully you can develop a plan or devise a plan to spend, to spend those funds versus returning them, but just to want you to be aware of it. And recommended adjusting journal entries on the first page. The journal entries behind here, the one, two pages. Some of these actually are, Jackie's just got us to, got them to us after we started our process. They're normal recurring year-end journal entries. There was a period probably 10 years ago or so when there was probably three or four times this, so Jackie has, went a long way towards doing additional year-end reconciliations and that type of thing. So these have been posted to your statements. Your statements agree with our audit report, and actually, the report has been transmitted to Minnesota Department of Ed, so. And then the last letter says communication with those charged with governance, conclusion of audit. First page, qualitative aspects of accounting practices. If there were any new accounting pronouncements, we would discuss that here. If, neck and wood, for this year, there were none. Top of page two, when I talked about general education aid and special education aid, I'm required to bring to the district's, your attention, any significant estimates in the financial statements. General ed and special ed are large dollar amounts, make up a good share of your revenue, and we feel that the estimates in those are both very close. Like I mentioned with the, last time I checked with MDE, we're very close with their last computation. Middle of page, difficulties encountered in performing the audit. There are no significant difficulties, no other difficulties either corrected, non-corrected misstatements. There are no uncorrected misstatements to our knowledge. Disagreements with management. We've had no disagreements with management during the course of our audit. Top of the next page, page three, consultations with other independent accountants. If either our firm or the district thought it may be necessary to get a second opinion on the application of an accounting principle or an accounting pronouncement, we discuss that here. Neither the district nor our firm consulted with outside accountants. Other audit findings and issues, if there are anything else that I thought should come to your attention, that we hadn't discussed previously, I would discuss that here. I mention this every year, that we can't make management decisions for the district, but if there's any way that we can probably provide you guys with any information or any additional information that'll help you guys to make good decisions, we're available year-round, so. I think that's, oh, I got it. Kind of tried to keep moving here for you, but if you're looking at this at a later date and have a question on something, do not hesitate to give me a call. I'd rather have you ask than wonder. There's a lot of information that goes together to get this to a document this size, to be honest with you.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, man.
Have a good evening. Congratulations, Lance.
Thank you. I want to thank Jackie for always being on top of stuff, and even if you have questions, she always finds them right away and answers them.
She even does that, she does that for us as well, so.
Yes, she's very good. Very good.
Which helps keep us in the mix.
Yep. I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, man.
Take care.
5.1.1, approval of audit report and journal entries. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. 5.2, truth and taxation. 5.2.1, discussion of budget and proposed property tax.
Okay, board members, each year we are required to hold a truth and taxation hearing, and so this will officially convene that hearing. The slides are on your, on your packet, as well as on the board for your reference, and I'll just cue Deb to move forward to the next slide. Whoa, not quite that fast, but yeah, we'll move along here and go through the process to inform everybody about what's going on with our truth and taxation process. And if you have questions, please don't hesitate to ask, and we will do our best to answer. And when I say we, that includes myself and Jackie, and if we don't have an answer, we will certainly seek to find the answer that you might ask. So moving on to slide three, you can see that the reason we have that is in accordance with Minnesota Statute 27.065, that we are required to hold this, and it is regarding the property tax statements that individuals will receive regarding their taxable pay, their tax payable. And you can see in point number two, most taxing jurisdictions hold these public hearings prior to certifying their final levies to discuss payable taxes, 25 levy, and fiscal year 25 budget. So, and this is an opportunity if there are any public comments related to those. Moving on to the next slide, who sets the levy? Components of a district's tax levy are generated really by a couple of functions. One is the state formula that impacts how we are funded as a school district, and the second is voter-approved as authorized by the state. And these are your operating referendums, and as you heard earlier, those outstanding bonds that we have within the district. Moving on to slide five. People may wonder, how is their property tax determined? And the county assessor is the one that has a significant role in this, looking at the market value for each parcel of property. And as you, as Jackie and I sat through a training earlier this year on levies, one of the things that was noted, in particular in southwestern Minnesota, southern Minnesota, is the great increase in the local value. is the great increase in the local valuations of local property because of land values and how those have increased exponentially. So there are some districts that have seen their, their property valuations increase by as much as 50%. I think ours was a 33, 38% increase in property valuations and again, driven by those market values of land. Then Minnesota's legislature has a LUD, a tax capacity formula that they apply and then it is calculated from those functions in terms of what the local levies will be. The next slide shows the sources of general funds across the state. You heard during our audit report, our general fund. And you can see that as, as, as the state goes, about 70% of the general funds, so the large gray piece of the pie there is, is where the bulk of the funds come from for the general fund. And then there are some federal sources that go into this at the state level, about 9%. Property taxes make up 16%. And again, local sources of revenue, about 5%. Now, this is the state and each individual district looks a little bit different relative to each of the district's property wealth and functions accordingly. So we can move on to the next slide then, slide seven. And I think this is an important slide just to highlight that funding often trails what happens with inflation. We've seen that become even more pronounced in the latter years here, our most recent history, when we look particularly from 2021 to 2025. And as a, as a reference point, right now, funding for K-12 education is trailing inflation by approximately $1,364 per pupil unit in fiscal year 2025. So when people have asked, how have we done historically? If you go back to 2020, or 2003, you can see that that gap was relatively narrow and it has only continued to increase over the years. And that's why you see the increases in local operating referendum that have occurred across the state because it has just become a function of, of local districts to maintain some of the things that they may have historically done. And property tax levies, I think are, are an important function to look at as well. Where are the impacts coming from? And you can see the school district versus non-school district property tax levies. And as you see, the, the bulk of the property tax levies are from non-school functions. So again, people may, may say, well, the school district has this or that impact on our local property tax. We are not the bulk of what happens with the local property tax. So again, that's just a point of reference as well. So we get a little more granular and specific with our district when we turn to our, our current numbers for the 24, 25 school year budget. And again, these are items that have been developed and projected into our budget. This isn't new information for you board members, just compiled into this truth in taxation report to understand how we are arriving at our levy targets that we are. The general fund, we had a projected revenues of $15,452,000 with projected expenditures of $16,973,000. And that yields us a projected deficit of 1.5 million. Again, not a new number, not a surprising number, a number that we heard when we adopted the original budget earlier this year. Our food service fund continues to show growth and we will put forward a plan to the Department of Education as is required to determine how we can spend down those resources. And I know there've been some questions, can we apply it in some of our curricular areas? Unfortunately, we can't. I wish we could do a pro-star kitchen with these funds, but MDE is very restrictive on what you can do with these funds. And it's really unfortunate because I know a part of our original plans with the bond funds was to do something in our, in our child, or in our family consumer science kitchen, but unfortunately we can't use it that way. At least I haven't found a creative way to yet. General debt service funds, you can see what's going on there and then building construction for a total deficit when you combine all funds together of 1.5 million. So not a whole lot of variance off of our general fund. That is our largest fund. Fun little pictures of our little arrows across the district as we move to the next slide, slide 11, our tax statements. So this just gives an idea of a property tax statement for everybody to understand how it looks. You have your property classification and market value, send in the spring of 2024 and cannot change the value. And then you want to watch for your spring of 2025 statement. There are places where these taxable valuations can be appealed that will be notified on those tax statements. So individuals, if they wish to appeal their valuation change, they can do so accordingly. The effective tax rates on the next slide show what those rates are established by the state. And it's based upon your property classification in the state of Minnesota. You can see the farm versus seasonal recreational, which we don't have much of obviously in Pipestone. Residential homesteads, the apartments, public utilities, and then the commercial industry, those, those rates are again, all established through the state. And you can see that that is sourced by the House Research Committee. One of the things that we benefit from in southwestern Minnesota pretty extensively is the ag-to-school tax credit. We've talked about that within the context of the roofing project and I know in the bond for the new school, it was also a discussion point. It was a law that was enacted back in 2020, or excuse me, 2017. And it does have reach into Fund VII, which is all of our debt service levies. And then it is projected to remain at seven, or 70% into 2025. And it does come from state income, sales and other tax revenues. And it is a way to create some balance in equity across the state in terms of tax impact. So into the next slide, you can see some of the history of those. And again, the fixed rate at 20, 25 of 70%. And then finding your ag-to-school credit on your tax statement. Again, you can look at the tax statement sample that is provided here in the property tax and credit section. It does have ag and rural land credits listed there and that's where individuals can see the benefit that we as a local district have when we exercise the ag-to-school credit. And as you look at the next slide, slide 16, we're not going to get into all the details, but as you look at it, the darker red, the greater above the median it is in terms of the impact, positive impact ag-to-school credit has. And if you look at each and every one of those counties that is highlighted in the darker red, you would probably see the greater valuations in farmland. Again, just because those are really the breadbasket counties of the state of Minnesota. And we get a little more specific here within our district with our local option revenue and operating referendum. You can see what those allowances are per pupil and the equalizing factors that are factored into, into these areas. And we do not have OPEB funds in the district. And Jackie, if you have questions on that, we can certainly give you more detail, but OPEB was an option that was provided to districts several years ago for post-employment retirement benefits and Pipestone area schools did not exercise that option. So while you may see references to OPEB, that is not something that is specifically applying to the Pipestone area schools. Moving on to the next slide, some more proud arrows. So looking at our school district's tax levy, as people look at their tax statements, they may see changes in their tax statements. The first thing I would encourage people to look at is what has happened to your property valuation. And make certain that you reference that because that does dictate oftentimes what happens to the taxes. What we are seeing in, in districts like ours where there's increase in ag valuation is a, a greater reliance on local versus state effort. And again, that's just a function of, of property wealth. And we're really curious to see across the state what's going to happen, particularly as property values in the ag areas have gone up and now we're seeing some of the major complexes downtown Minneapolis standing open and vacant and wondering how that's going to shake up some of the property wealth accounts across the state. So again, it's a lot more discussion happening on a much bigger picture across the state relative to property valuations. The next slide talks about referendum. And our district currently is below the median in terms of our per pupil allocation for operating referendum. We're at $474 per pupil. The median is at 513. The upper quartile is at nine, or excuse me, is at 1,025. Again, interesting to see the distribution of where those dollars are. The upper quartile, as you see the dark red, is really concentrated particularly around the Twin City metro area. You'll notice a couple of more remote areas as well. They may need that for some transportation-related services. There are 94 districts, however, across the entire state that do not have an operating referendum in place. One of the items that was enacted by the state legislature that I believe our board will need to discuss at a future date is the opportunity for school boards to renew an operating referendum one time without a vote of the public. That is something that we will need to discuss because our operating referendum is slated to conclude, I believe, 2027, 28. So we will have some planning and preparation to do when we think about closing or maintaining that, that source of funding there in the district. Property wealth pictures. Again, you heard me mention this earlier that our district referendum market value per residential pupil unit, this is the cost per pupil unit for the, for the land valuations. And not to be a surprise, that concentration in the, in the Twin Cities area, again, just because of the high commercial concentration relative to greater Minnesota. And a lot to do with what's going on in the, in the Lakes Country area because you see a lot of resort-type communities there. So putting it all together, we have our long-term facility maintenance and we have, we approve a 10-year facility plan. We know that our plan will reflect because we have talked about LTFM in the context of our roofing project. So when we look at updating our 10-year plan, contingent upon what might happen legislatively, a significant portion of that, if not all, will be allocated towards supporting our roofing project through a bond against our LTFM funds. Again, that's contingent upon what might happen legislatively because there have been considerable discussions about doing something through LTFM at the state level for roofs. Proposed pay 2025 levy certification for our district. You can see the numbers that are included here. Again, Jackie has reviewed these and has provided input. And you can see what the total amounts are when you look at our pay 2025 levy of $4,297,000, which is an increase of $372,000, about a change of about 9.5%. So 9.49%. And you notice in the footnote, going back if you can, Deb, I think it's an important footnote to capture that the ag-to-school credit provides approximately $1 million offset of the general fund debt service levy for farmers. And we don't have any timber landowners out here though, so. We have more information available. We encourage, Jackie nor I are property tax experts, but we are required to provide this hearing. If people have questions, we encourage them to reach out to Amanda Sandy at the auditor's office for detail specific about their property tax statements. Or if people wish, they can contact the state of Minnesota for property tax relief and support. And there's an 800 number provided for that as well. So I do stand ready for any questions. And if needed, I may defer to Jackie as well, but again, that is our truth in taxation.
Any questions for, for Jackie? All right. Moving on to, number six, consent agenda. 6.1, approved minutes of the regular school board meeting of November 25th, 2024. And 6.2, personal report, action required. Can I get a motion to, first, are there any questions? Any consent agenda? Discussion? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. Seven, financials. 7.1, review of budget year-to-date.
Yeah, budget year-to-date, I made a few transfers. We're currently at 33%. Last year at this time, we're at 32%, so it's close. The budget amendment will either be done in January or February. So then I'll go back and I'll review everything and include things that we didn't know about in June and amend the budget, which then will require the board approval when that I like to say January, but we'll just say February.
Okay.
January is what's like.
Questions for Jackie on the budget year-to-date? All right. 7.2, approved treasures report for November.
Yeah, current cash balance is $9.7 million. It's just the stuff, the accounts we have, I mean, bank accounts.
Any questions? Comments? Get a motion to approve the treasures report for November?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. 7.3, approved 2023 aid bonds treasures report for November.
Current balance in the bank account would be 2.7 million.
Any questions? Get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. 7.4, approved regular bills for December. Everybody get a chance to look through them? Everybody see anything that stands out? Get a motion to approve the regular bills for December?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. 7.5, approved high school activity bills for December. Can everybody get a chance to look through? Anything that stood out? Any questions? Get a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. Number eight, board forum information. 8.1, board reports and updates. Did I get any? I'll see if I can get together.
No.
We, we have mediation on Friday and we got a, we got a statement that we got put together that we'll be releasing following the meeting.
And just for clarification for everybody, the statement will clarify the school board's last best final offer that was presented at the mediation session before, before the mediation session concluded.
Anyone else? Anybody? No? All right. Number nine, administrators' report. 9.1, superintendent's board report.
Board members, you can see the enrollment on there. Again, slight variations, not. Again, slight variations, not anything too great in terms of that. I did, in my report, include information as well about the mediation that's also reflected, like I said before, or like Brad referenced before, in the handout that will be provided. The state budget forecast, I've included a document for you to reference. This is actually from the recent budget forecast that was released, and I think a real telling statement of this, and this goes back to a question that oftentimes boards get asked at the school board level, why do you have a fund balance? And when you look at the statement shared in the forecast, this is directly from the state forecasters, according to the forecast, while Minnesota is expected to have a surplus of $616 million for the 2026-2027 biennium, there's a $5.1 billion deficit brewing for fiscal years 2028 to 2029 unless the legislature takes actions and measures to prevent it from happening. This is driven by a lot of legislative action that took place the last couple of years with categorical funding and some things that are put in place, some that haven't taken effect yet, others that have. So again, I just want the board to be aware, this was released, I believe, last week, so again, it's fairly fresh. It was information that was shared in the Minnesota Rural Educators Association, information for districts that are part of MREA, which we are. We've been having some discussions to partner with the various EMS services in the community on a joint venture for a communications tower and some efforts to improve communication tools in the community and within the school district. There may be an opportunity to do some partnerships with that, and if we keep moving forward with that effort, which it sounds like there's some traction to do so, it would allow for some more robust radio systems in our school district and our buildings for enhanced and improved communications during crisis moments. So we were reminded once again today how important that is with the school shooting that occurred over in Wisconsin today. So again, just know that these are important discussions and things that we're focused on. Community education, we've been hearing some feedback on some opportunities that we've been providing and have received some feedback from staff. We asked staff members if there was some interest, so it sounds like we're generating some interest among staff members for some different classes that can be taught. And then we do have a reorganization meeting, I believe, board members, you should all have that on your calendar for January 6. And the school board's convention, I know we have several of you planning to attend January 16th and 17th in Minneapolis. There is a pre-session training that's going on that I know Brad and I are planning to attend. It's going to be talking about particularly the implications of the new Family Medical Leave Act requirements in Minnesota that we have to put into our negotiated agreement and how we can go about doing so. So that's all I have to share, unless there's some other questions. I will point that you've been getting these at the board meeting, these little tidbits from Tahoe Foods. They were one of our sponsors at our Christmas party, so we appreciated that, and just, again, just some things that they're trying to do to build awareness of what's going on in the child nutrition program. And obviously, we have some opportunities to do more because of the fund balance that's in our child nutrition program. So just some more information there as well.
Did you want to touch on the budget for the past year?
That was the reference that I had to the budget deficit that's projected. So that's that document that you see attached for further reference, and would encourage all board members, if you did not read that through your communication from MREA, that you would take an opportunity to do so, because it does give you some of those projections and what those are based on for the state legislature.
Is that meeting at 7:00, Ben, on the 6th?
Any questions for Clint?
Oh, can you see the deficit? They're projecting it 2029, I believe, is that what it said?
Yeah, let me go back.
Is that what it was? Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Tyler just pronounced. Well, you're looking at the sheet.
Any other questions? All right. Moving on, 9.2, principals' board report.
All right. Good evening. December was a lot of fun, so we had the kindergarten and first grade concert on December 3rd. That was awesome. The first graders had speaking parts, and it was so incredible to watch them. They did an amazing job. Friday, December 6th, we hosted our second Terrific Kid program. Once again, I love that our community comes together and celebrates our students. We had gingerbread fun, so on the December 3rd and 5th, our third-grade students had their parents in the commons and made gingerbread houses. And yet, today and tomorrow, our preschool students in Ms. Dawn's room will be doing gingerbread houses as well. We had our staff Christmas party this last Saturday. That was a ton of fun. We missed those, we're not able to attend. The second and third grade concert is tomorrow night. I look forward to that. Today, the second graders were in there practicing away. The students in kindergarten through fifth grade wrote letters to the Pipestone County Star, and then we had a lot of fun dress-up days throughout the month, so.
I thought it was very cool, the little Ia Cala Land that gave us a lot of really positive, you know, look to our school district. So it's great. I think it's a great program, but I just, that was really cool that it was related to Ia Cala Land.
Yes. Any questions?
Any questions for Jennifer? Thank you.
I do not have a formal board report for you this month, but do you have any questions or concerns or comments for me?
9.3, curriculum, teaching, and learning board report.
Good evening. So we are starting the midst of statewide testing. We have our access testing for our EL students that will be starting in January. And then, following up with that, we have our MCA testing, so we are, I'm making sure we have everything ordered, getting staff trained and all of those things to prepare for the MCA testing. And I got to join Mrs. Morvitz at the Colony for her monthly check-in, and then Mrs. Ortmann and I actually spent a half a day out there a couple of weeks ago. I'd never been out there, so just learning what it's all about, what they do, got a little tour. It's very interesting to see how they do things out there. So that was a lot of fun, actually.
It is very interesting. Were we out there two years ago? Three years ago?
Three years ago, but yes.
Yeah, three years ago. Yep? Very cool.
It was very cool.
Any questions for Lisa?
Hard to believe it's already testing season.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. 10, unfinished business. 10.1, second reading of policy 503, student attendance.
This was brought to my attention, but it only received one reading. I never brought it back for a second, so we were doing that a couple months later.
I did have a question. Just because I was asked. On absences or tardies, tardies, and I don't know what it said before, but weather-related or vehicle-related tardies, are those going to be excused or unexcused? And the other conflicting thing is the, I guess, the illness, the excused, an unexcused tardies. I've had, I think some parents just want clarification because their child has received detention for a second unexcused, but it was called in ill in the morning, so.
That should not happen. A parent calls, being in that situation.
Okay. When I look at this, too, I just want to, I just want to make sure that there's clarity here on absences. Just when I read this and I think about it, I go, I don't want us to get into a pickle with, I guess, the school being held accountable for how many absences kids have. And I think it's great that, you know, kids don't have to provide this documentation for personal appointments anymore. But I do feel like we need to have some accountability as to how many times a student can be called in for the same thing over and over without having documentation providing that. What if we go 15 days in a quarter, a semester, and a parent calls it in every one of those? Are those 15 days excused, or do we have to have a doctor's note after seven times, after 10 times? I would like to see. I don't know how anyone else feels. Maybe some clarity there.
I thought there was something that bothered me here, that something about a fitness more than seven school days per school year in elementary, or one or more classes on a seven-day school day per school year in middle school or junior high, goes on told, that would be considered habitual truancy. Then would they be talked to? I mean, would there be, I mean, would it be conversation with the parents?
Yes. We have attendance meetings every Monday, and those are the things that we talk about. Who do we have concerns about? We do have an attendance problem.
Yeah, it's what?
It's right there at the bottom.
It's on.
Well, the three-day, and then you can see the three or more. Under eight?
Oh, yeah, there it is, the one, too.
One and two?
That talks about it in the last page, too.
So in answer to your question, Daphne, what we would have to do is, if we keep it as is, it just honestly just creates more pressure for me and the rest of the attendance team in trying to get ahold of parents and families and figuring out where students are and why they weren't here, and trying to encourage them to come to school. I mean, literally just last week, I was on the phone with a parent that was unable to get her child to school because they didn't want to come, and I ended up getting on the phone with the student and just begging them to come to school. So that's choice A. Choice B is to put something more concrete in the policy. Or in our handbook.
Do you think having more consequences would actually help the kids that are sick? I mean, that are not showing up? I mean, to me, I sometimes wonder if you're not showing, if you don't see it as important to get your kids to school, is that really going to make a difference? You know what I mean?
Right. I mean, if you read, like, the truancy, like, when it gets to that level.
Yeah. That's what I mean. It is against the law. It's against the law, but.
As parents, you can face consequences, and so.
Right.
Yeah. I just don't want it to get to that point without, you know, and then saying, well, it says right here in the policy that I can call my kid in and it will be excused every single time for any reason. So I didn't know if there was, like, you know, if you're gone for three days and you're ill, do you need a doctor's note on the fourth day that you come back? Just so we know those three days you were ill. I mean, at that point, you're usually going to the doctor anyway. And I would say that the students that we, that are sick, or those that are legitimately, you know, having a surgery or something, those parents over-provide and over-communicate every single time their child goes to the doctor, brings the notes, sends me the notes. I don't know if this is something that we can really even put into effect this school year because we've already adopted it. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Willard, we'd have to wait until next summer to reevaluate the handbook in terms of how many days, after so many days without a doctor's note.
Yeah, we would have to do it at that point, consistent with policy that's adopted, obviously, going down.
I do. I'm glad you brought that up because it is, it is something that is, that I believe is being abused by students and by parents a little bit. Not all of them, of course, not all of them, but it does seem too easy to send an email just saying, my child's at home.
Mrs. Ortmann, maybe you can comment as well about the engagement of the school resource officer with truancy conversations?
Right. They are, their hands are tied as far as that goes. I actually did ask our school resource officer to do a home visit on a child that was just not coming to school, a high school student, and he said, I'm not able to do that, I cannot force them in the car, so our hands are tied everywhere.
And like your truancy officers that come in, I think from Rockville.
Well, our school-based truancy officer would be our SRL for our school, and then who we report to is elsewhere. But we do make reports. We met actually today, and we have reported a few truancy situations. If they follow through, I don't know if they follow through.
If that just goes to the state, then, or who does the department take?
Casey Slaba's in charge of that. I'm not exactly sure. She's the one that reports it.
Ashley will have to review that, and then create reports and file paperwork for us
It's really frustrating when, and this happens almost every day, when I talk to a parent either in person or on the phone or through email, and they want their child to go, but they aren't able to get them to at least four times a week. And as a parent, that's hard for me to wrap my head around. You know, high school students, actually even middle, we had one in middle as well. They just were unable to get them.
So Clint, what would be our, when we use the word protection in most cases where it is hardly truancy, so we, you know, because multiple times and the kid just doesn't want to come? I mean, what's our protection that the state isn't going to come in here and go through our attendance or say that we're?
It's reported accordingly, and, you know, really, the burden goes back to the parent if we had teeth in the truancy effort. This attendance issue isn't unique to us. Every district right now across the state's bad, as it seems.
And I think it depends on if it gets screened in and if they're taking it any further. Last year, we finally got one to get screened in and taken it further to educational neglect. So we are doing, on our due diligence part, it just depends on when we make those reports, if they're getting screened in, if they're doing anything follow-through on their end.
So agree, Daphne, that this should probably have more teeth? Should we, I mean, what's our, what should be our? Handbook for the next school year? Policy committee, when? I mean, do we do it now? Do we?
I think what we could do is probably after the first of the year, when we get our new committee assignments put in place, get the committee together.
And start making changes since we are December and it's just January.
Yep, because then that would put us in a position to update the handbook in time for adoption into the spring, early summer for the handbook for the next school year.
So then, do we just, like, so-called, go through the motion right now, and since we're the second reading?
I think you could do the second reading, adopt it as a second reading.
And then in January, when we create our new committee teams?
Do it at that time. And in the meantime, we can start doing some homework with some other districts to see what they've done, and also reach out to our county officers to ask what they can do to help support us with the truancy side, because that's really where the issue lies. The example that Mrs. Ortmann gave where a parent's calling us, throwing their hands in the air, saying, I can't get my child off the couch to go to school, well, whose responsibility is that really? And we're not the organization to contact if that's the case. They should be contacting the police department and declaring their own child truant from school, but no parent's going to do that, knowing that there's consequences for calling truant that they have to return on, so.
Yeah, I think a lot of, you know, the very excuse for tardy last year, and then, yeah, this, it just seems like.
Yeah, that's a good way to say it. Because you do meet, like, what do you say, what'd you say, Mrs. Ortmann? Like, we need to talk about student attendance and...
Cause you do meet, like, what, what do you say, what'd you say, Mrs. Orton, like, we need to talk about student attendance and?
We meet every Monday as the attendance team, we decide how we want to move forward with each case that gets brought forth. And our attendance team now has, we are actually getting them ready to go, any student that has, we're calling it great attendance. We're sending those home with their little handwritten notes, thanking them for coming to school. We're just trying to be as positive as possible and making school meaningful and engaging and a safe place physically and mentally for kids, so that they actually want to. That's what I can, that's the piece that I can control right now.
Well, we know that this is where the value of having every child involved in a school-sponsored activity is important, because that is an added incentive for them to attend and to be here. Then we started looking at some other non-traditional type activities. There's drone racing out there. There's esports out there that may capture another set of our student body that provides some encouragement to, to attend beyond what's happening in terms of curricular activities.
Any discussion, questions? Daphne, you good? Give a motion to approve, is that what you?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Hold the same sign. Motion passes. 11, 11.1, resolution accepting donations. We got a hundred dollar donation from First Bank and Trust for the banned holiday open house. Also another hundred dollar donation from First Bank and Trust for the wire holiday open house. Hundred dollar donation from Chrysler King Lutheran for the wellness room. Hundred dollar anonymous donation for overdue lunch accounts. And another hundred dollar anonymous alumni donation for overdue lunch accounts. Like to thank, thank all these people for these donations. They're much appreciated. Can I get a motion to approve, accept these donations? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes.
No questions. Like, on those overdue lunch accounts, can we put some of that money from our sitting there and just pay them off? No.
You have to, if you write off lunch accounts, you have to write them off to the general fund. You can't do that.
Yeah, yes, food service fund.
We can do that.
We can?
That you can. Now, with this type of contract we have, yes.
With the new one, we can?
Yes.
Push the food quality, yes.
Okay. Well, that's about what we should put.
Snakes for days.
We'll get in touch with the Pipestone Cattlemen's. Wonder if you know a guy?
11.2, approved technical updates to policies 507.5, 606, 606.5, and 613.
And notice that these are technical updates, hence no policy committee was necessary to call. It was referencing some very minute number changes in statute or something along those lines. Again, nothing that was necessitating a lot of language consideration or verbiage in terms of local decision-making. So that's why these are just technical updates.
Any discussion? Can I get a motion to approve? So moved. A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. 11.3, adopt levy limitation and certification 2024 payable 2025.
Jack, did you want to comment on this at all?
Not really. I don't, I don't know if there's anything to comment on.
Well, there you have it, folks.
Oh, this sheet right here. Well, okay, I can, this I just compare from one year to the next year. And if you see the top two, and I think this is, this is why we have an increase. Basically, it's due to the increase of our property value, because they take, they increase, they take the property value divided by your students, basically. They come down real easy and they come up with a dollar mark. If your property value increases and your students stay the same, then your per pupil is going to be higher.
And your state aid goes down accordingly.
And your state aid goes down, that's what that whole equity, so they give us less state aid because our property value per pupil is higher. And that's what's driving most, a lot of this increase. So the solution is either the prices of our land goes down, or we get more students.
What do you want, Lance?
Go down.
But that's, that's a lot what's going on here up above, so. And like I said, and it's all formulas, and the, and the state can adjust that anytime they want to. They can adjust where that tier one, that tier two is, and how much state aid you get compared to what the local taxpayers have to pay. Basically, what she told us when.
There's some speculation that that could be a discussion at the legislature this year, just because after what's going on not only land prices, but inflation and how it's impacted housing values across the state too. Probably deuce for some review of that, but again, they have a huge deficit to fix, $5.1 billion, so the money has to come from somewhere.
Whoever makes the motion will need to include the $4,297,682 in the motion.
Any discussion? Can I get a motion to approve?
I probably adopt our, the total proposed levy of $4,297,682.82 cents for the 2024, 2024 payable 2025. Is that all I got to say?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. 11.4, resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designated hours during which the polling place, place will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on a day of a statewide election.
So we did not have to do this in 2023 because of the March 1st reelection. And now, I think in the legislative statutes it changed, so we only need to do this once until we vote or until the polling, polling place changes.
For once this is established.
It's good until, yeah.
Until it no longer exists, right, right.
Unless the polling place changes.
Any discussion? Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. Number 12, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Get this shit off of Katie.
We're adjourned.